Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood's Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, August 26, 2021, beginning at approximately 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order at approximately 7:02 PM. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct said subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and Becky Bennett will be the timekeeper. A yellow light located on the podium will come on indicating that you have one more minute to wrap up, and then a red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking during this public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time, under our general public comment period? Okay, seeing no one. Next is the commission's public hearing, where we will receive comments, both oral and written, regarding a zone classification change request for 11.92 acres located at 1550 West Boulevard for a specific use permit to allow NAICS use 6111 elementary and secondary schools for the new Klein Elementary School site. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this application is for the new Klein Elementary. The current campus at 505 Briar Meadow Avenue will be replaced with this one. The property was dedicated to FISD by Friendswood Development. It was part of the original West Ranch planned unit development for them to dedicate this property to the school district for a future school site. The current property is on planned unit development, which was because it was part of the original West Ranch PUD, so the SUP is required for the school use on top of that. Nope. So the new site will include a two-story main building, which is approximately 79,857 square feet. The site will also include several playgrounds, an outdoor classroom, a track, and an amphitheater. The entirety of the property will be fenced, and all the traffic circulation for drop-off and everything will be contained within the site as much as possible. The main access will be from West Boulevard. The landscaping and screening plans were included in the back-up material. There weren't any trees on this site to be mitigated, so everything they're putting is going to be new and pretty. The new main building elevations are included, were included in your back-up material as well. Like I said, two-story, nothing too significant elementary school, so nothing too crazy. Public hearing notices were sent out, the newspaper notice was published, approximately 34 property owners were notified, and a sign was posted on the property. And that's it.
But this has been designated earmarked for many years.
Yes.
Correct? Okay, I see some representatives of the applicant. Is there anything you'd like to say at this time? You can step to the mic. Nothing at this time? Okay. My guess is that we'll give you a good chance when we have a question or two. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? This change? Okay. With that, our next item, agenda item, is our consent agenda. Normally, we handle these as just a motion and a second. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to remove the minutes approval from a normal consent agenda and discuss it for just a minute. Do we have anybody, is there a, well, anybody willing to make a motion to discuss the minutes?
Motion to discuss the minutes.
Well, the motion is to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. That's better.
Okay.
Motion to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we need to vote on that. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. The reason I asked for that, and thank everybody for bearing with me on that, is Marcus Perry, who was not able to be here tonight, did call me and let me know that he might not be able to make it this evening, but he did have one comment that I thought was a good one. And that, well, he just wanted to bring that up before we approved the minutes, and that was that in the minutes, we couldn't find where we had indicated that, although there wasn't, I don't believe, a formal vote, that there was a general consensus amongst the Planning and Zoning Commissioners of our last meeting, that we supported the future land use map, or at least supported taking, it was ready to take before council to workshop it. And he thought that was important, and it's a good, just, it is kind of how it went, I think. So I would like to add that to the minutes, something along those lines to the minutes, before they get published. So if, any discussion on that? Anybody have, see it differently? So I guess now that we have a motion, we've removed them from the consent, I would, I think I'll need a motion to add those comments to the minutes.
Yeah, a motion to approve the minutes with, and then state your amendment.
Okay. Somebody willing to make that motion?
Motion to approve the discussion items, or the discussion item, and add in there that we are going to vote that the future land use map is ready to go to council.
We had a consensus.
Yeah, consensus.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Oh. He beat you to it.
I'm sorry. Third.
We have a motion and a second and a third. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Thanks, everybody. Our next item, oops, sorry, changed that. Next are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2020-17, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to City Council for the requested zone classification change of 11.92 acres located at 1550 West Boulevard for a specific use permit to allow NAICS use 6111 elementary and secondary schools for the new Klein Elementary School site. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Your second?
Second.
Aubrey, just for completeness, is there anything else you'd like to say about that?
No, sir.
Okay, just checking. Okay, I'll start with you, Commissioner Sassen.
Yes, so I like the layout, I like the live oak trees. I'm impressed that many folks put so many trees that will grow tall and give shade to the area. I was impressed. I saw you putting in red buds, and I said, oh, maybe these guys are going to put in all red buds and little crepe myrtles, and they're going to be, and so I was impressed and pleased about the live oaks. I think that's very good. I think it's indicative of Friendswood, and I think if they trim them going up, they'll give nice shade for the, for everybody, including the children. I had a little knit, and it's not going to make any difference, but I'm going to say I spent a lot, some time on it. The Friendswood Lakes Boulevard is going to be changed to Friendswood Parkway, but it's too, I understand that hasn't happened yet, so your drawing is correct as it shows. It's too bad. I guess someday, maybe somebody will change that or correct it when they get around to change. I think it's imminent to change the name of that road to Friendswood Parkway, but there'll be a lot of changes, including this one, that'll have to be made when that happens. My one big concern is sidewalks. I know there's an existing sidewalk along the One Street Pleasant Avenue.
Pleasant Hill.
Pleasant Hill, and that's existing, and that's staying, and that's good. Along West Ranch Boulevard, there is sidewalk coming all the way up to your property, there's sidewalk leaving your property. The one gap on the whole road is this property, and there's no sidewalk. And so what I would ask is that you add the sidewalk. I feel very strongly that this is the one gap in the sidewalk. This is a very walkable community. It's meant to, it's designed really well with the PUD. I'm impressed with West Ranch. But having one gap in the sidewalk, that means people have to cross over or walk through the, what would be mud sometimes, and it's just, it's the one blight on the whole street. Similarly, on the, on Friendswood Parkway or Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, there is, the sidewalk does continue all the way across on the other side of the street, and then it stops where you are. Now, after you're done, it also stops at where the houses start, but that's a battle we'll fight another day. I would respectfully ask that we also get a sidewalk along, along that street. Friendswood Lakes Boulevard is going to become Friendswood Parkway, and it's going to become a major freeway, basically. There's going to be a lot of traffic on it, and having people cross that over just to get to a sidewalk on the other side might be death-defying. They'll probably put a stoplight there, it's probably going to, you try to picture what it's going to be in five years, but once that opens up all the way through, it's going to become a major thoroughfare. And so I ask that we strongly, strongly consider a sidewalk in both of those places. There is another issue that, about landscaping between the property and the houses, but I'm going to, I'm going to let Joe bring that up later on, so I'm.
We want to discuss the sidewalk.
I think, I think that's, I think that's right. If you wouldn't mind, the representatives of the applicant, if you could come up, and if there's a comment from staff on the sidewalks, I'd like to hear their thoughts as well. But do you have, you have a response to Commissioner Sassen?
Yes, sir. On the sidewalk, so Pleasant Hill, you know, like you said, currently has that sidewalk. We would continue that sidewalk down West Boulevard, and then, I don't know, I'm, I know there's some future expansion on that Friendswood Parkway there.
I don't think there's a width expansion, I think there's a length expansion.
I thought there was something about a width expansion, maybe adding another lane or something on it, so no extension there.
The Parkway should, that is what it is.
Two lanes each direction, I think that's what the eventual plan is for it.
But I would say initially that the sidewalk would extend from Pleasant Hill down west in front, so that way that people coming across the other way can cross and then walk up that sidewalk into the school. And then same thing coming down Pleasant Hill, and then anybody coming up west can cross over the street, come that way as well, down the sidewalk in front of west or go up towards Pleasant Hill.
I'm sorry, so you're saying we shouldn't have a sidewalk, we should cross the street every time they want, the children want to get?
No, 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 sir. I'm saying we're going to include the sidewalk for those crossing areas there, Pleasant Hill along West Boulevard as well.
So right now, there's one on Pleasant Hill?
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying you'll add one on West Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it's not on there now, correct?
It's not there now, no.
Correct.
No, it's clearly not there now. And that would continue the West Boulevard to have a sidewalk contiguous all the way down the street, which is my one concern. We find a lot of sidewalks where we put one in, and we say there's still a gap, but we'll live with it. This is the gap, and so it's seldom we find the real gap and able to close the loop, so to speak. What is your view on the one along West, along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard?
I just don't think we're going to get a whole lot of walking traffic there. I think eventually that we'll probably have to extend and put something in there, possibly, but I don't know what's going to happen once it becomes Friendswood Parkway and it becomes a major thoroughfare, whether we want kids walking along that sidewalk or not. Because I know that some can get there from those houses back in the neighborhood, but I don't know how far that sidewalk extends right now, if there is any on Friendswood Parkway.
On the other side, I believe there's a sidewalk.
Yeah, on the other side, but this existing side, I don't think there's a sidewalk that extends that way.
I actually do not think there should be a sidewalk, and I know that's an odd thing to hear me say, on that side, because then kids are going to walk down to the end of that property, then there's nothing, so they're going to cross the street down there.
Help me under, you're talking about the sidewalk along Friendswood Parkway, adjacent to the school, I mean, not adjacent, but on that side.
So you're on board with the West Ranch one, West Boulevard?
West Boulevard, that I really wanted one.
Okay.
And I'm glad to hear that, because now we can actually, everyone that has access from their neighborhood, their house, that walks to the school, has a sidewalk leading to the school. Yet, you have to cross some of the roads, and that's going to happen, but I did not want one along Friendswood Boulevard.
Friendswood Lakes Boulevard.
Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, Friendswood Parkway, against the school, because that's going to lead kids to a dead end, where then they're going to cross the street without a crosswalk, or without a light, or without, so keep them funneled where they need to be. So I like that if you're putting one on the West Boulevard, that was my only comment.
Yes, sir, I agree with that, because if we run that sidewalk all the way down west, like you said, there's a sidewalk on the other side that those kids could walk down, there would be a crossing guard or a traffic signal, something there that's going to get those kids safely across the street, so they're not walking up Friendswood Lakes Boulevard and then trying to cross.
And I agree with your, both of your comments as we're kind of going at this altogether, but I believe there's a sidewalk. I thought, then, hold on, I think on Friendswood Parkway, at the edge of the new construction going down towards Avalon, there's a sidewalk on that school side. I'm, you're sure?
Yeah. There is a sidewalk on the other side of West Ranch Boulevard.
The reason why there's not a sidewalk on the West, on the West Ranch property is because that was the, their street cross-sections for their boulevards, their major, their boulevard streets were approved as part of their PUD, and so their street cross-sections only required a six-foot sidewalk on one side of the, all the way down West Boulevard from 518 to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, they added a few extras in there, like between Pleasant Hill and the entrance to that estate section, but it's not their, their street cross-sections only required a six-foot on one side.
They do have it on both sides on West Ranch, as far as I can see, from that school, both directions.
Not the entirety.
Only to the next street up, and then it stops.
Not the entirety.
That's correct. Not to the entirety.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. This is the gap between it on both sides, and on the other side, there's a sidewalk. Right by the school, there is sidewalk.
But I believe there's a sidewalk on the Avalon extension, or going past the school, on the new Friendswood Parkway section. I think there's a sidewalk on the school side. I don't think it dead-ends into nothing.
Pretty sure it does.
Okay, well, then I will defer to your recollection of it. I don't think it's going to show up on any of our maps, because I think.
It was installed with the recent road construction. It was part of the construction plans. It is on the school side, yes, sir, but it's further down.
How far?
Oh, no, it's not, it's not, it's not at the houses. It's not. I agree with that, but it's right.
On the Avalon property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts.
Across from, yeah, across from Avalon.
You can see it.
Friendswood Lakes.
From that property.
Oh, so it doesn't.
Where Sandy Lake is.
But that would be the creek.
It's on both sides down there.
But are.
Help me go that way.
I know, I can't get it to go that way.
Aubrey, I think it was on one of the previous slides that you had showed.
There is a, there is a photo map of it, maybe you can highlight. I am having troubles with my computer here. You can see there's a sidewalk here on West Boulevard before this, nobody's arguing that, I guess, and there's a sidewalk, damn it, here on, on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, here. There's none there.
No one, no one can, I'm not following you, but.
This, you know where this, this sidewalk is here?
Yeah, no, they can't see it, I can see it, because I'm looking over your shoulder.
Yeah, I see, I'm sorry. So on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, there is a sidewalk to the other side of West Boulevard.
Yes.
And on West Boulevard, on both sides, on the other side, there is a sidewalk. The one gap is on your property, on the school property.
Which he's saying that they're going to add that.
They're going to add that, so we're done on that.
Which is a good idea, thank you. But the only question now is, and again, I think there's, I think there's another sidewalk, but if everybody says no, or it's not even close by.
So, so the back of, this is West Ranch, behind the school.
Right.
Behind those, there is no sidewalk there.
Here, you can see it here, Joe.
It does, it starts there.
Here it is, Joe. Finally got it. There's no sidewalk here.
Right, but there is one right, right here.
Where?
On the, and that's what Becky was saying.
Another block down.
At the Avalon, as soon as, there is a sidewalk on that side, but okay.
No matter what, there'd be a gap at the end of the sidewalk.
I really assumed you were going to tell me that you don't have a sidewalk on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, because you don't, it's not, it's across your property line. That was what I really thought you were going to say, because I think it is outside, I'm, I think it is outside of your property.
I know there's an easement there, so I'll stick with what you said.
That pipeline runs through there as well.
Yeah, there's a fifty, there's a 50-foot easement, I believe, if I remember correctly, that goes on that, along that, so I really thought that was the answer why, because that's going to be an obvious place, because what we don't want is children having to cross the street that are maybe, I don't, and again, maybe we're assuming they walk and no one walks at Klein.
Actually, the, the traffic report says 45 people will be, children a day will be walking.
What we didn't want was them to cross West Boulevard, then come across Friendswood Parkway, and then go, then go down Friendswood Parkway and make multiple crossings. We were thinking, well, we just walk down that side of the school, down Friendswood Parkway, but, okay.
So the question is, and you make a good point, Travis, if we build a sidewalk along Friendswood Lake Boulevard and it stops, are the children then going to walk across? And if we don't build it, are they just going to walk down there through the mud? Or maybe skirt on the road itself, so they don't have to cross the road to go down that way?
Or they have a crosswalk and a guard, they cross, and then they're on the sidewalk along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard on the south side.
Other side, and then they go down, and then maybe they have to go back across later on.
At Avalon.
For the Avalon neighborhood.
Yeah.
So the only way, then, then you would say, okay, then we need to have the sidewalk go down west, or do it on the school, and then again, that stretch to connect them.
Yeah, but they have jurisdiction over that. So what we do is we get, get them halfway there and out of the hallway there. And so that's the question, does it cause more problems than it causes benefit? I, I, I view, I.
Probably more traffic next to the school, more traffic next to the school than down by Avalon. I don't like them crossing the street in either of those places, but.
Right, yeah.
West, the West Ranch side, or the West Boulevard side is, is, I think, the number one priority.
Yeah.
I think there's another way, so I think we've solved that one, but the number two to me is that one side next to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard.
I guess the question is, is it beneficial or detrimental to have, have a half a sidewalk going down there? Would it, would it encourage more bad behavior than good behavior?
So here's the thing that's different than our last meeting, right? Last meeting, we're talking about a sidewalk because, you know, the neighboring residents could use it, right?
You're talking about falling leaves now?
Yeah, so on this one, this is a grade school. My children go to a grade school here in Friendswood, and there's, in Friendswood, a lot of parents drop off, walk their kids to school. There is going to be a lot of parents walking their kids to school in this neighborhood, I believe. So I feel the sidewalks are a very important subject, so I honestly think that there should be a sidewalk along there. But, but I mean, the, but I do have concern, just like everybody else, of it dropping off there. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Is that better, I mean, is it better to install it now while they're building incrementally? It's, it's, it's nothing incremental, it's a rounding error for this project, and does it add safety for later? Then you're only missing one section.
So, so it comes to the bigger question, right? Do we ever think that the rest of that sidewalk, sidewalk will be completed? I don't.
I don't see a path for it happening. I, I'm with you.
Correct.
But the, the other choice is people are going to go across the street at the crossing guard, like you say, and then down Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, and then have to cross again back across, which, and this is not what Friendswood Lakes Boulevard looks like now.
Right.
Think of it like Pearland Parkway.
Right.
And so it's, 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 it's going to be a lot of traffic.
Or Lee City Parkway.
Fairly fast-moving traffic.
Well, I'd be interested in hearing from staff, Becky or Aubrey, do you have a comment on this? I mean, we were up here debating, this is something you, you look at all the time. Do you have a thought about that sidewalk?
I mean, I guess, the, I guess I'm conflicted a little bit, because this was a part of their PUD that was approved in this design, but I am thinking, like, once Avalon is developed, they are going to have houses on the north side of the Boulevard in that triangle, and I mean, those kids are most likely going to be zoned to the school as well, so, I mean, it's not just West Ranch kids that are going to be attending the school, it's going to be, you know, the Avalon kids, and maybe, I don't think they would be walking from.
Fifty percent of the traffic is going to come from that direction.
Right.
So it's definitely not just a West Ranch school.
So, I mean, even, but even if the school district puts in the sidewalk, there's still going to be the gap, you know, where West Ranch.
Were you saying that West Ranch was obligated to put in a sidewalk in this area?
No, they were not.
They were not, okay.
They were approved to not put them in.
Okay, so it's specifically addressed, and we're told, they, they got exemption not to?
Yes.
You know, but 15 years ago, whenever that was done, I mean, nobody, they were looking at much bigger plans. I don't think they were looking into sidewalks for schools.
Right.
Is my guess. They had a lot of bigger things to decide on.
Is there a path to getting a sidewalk here without, I mean, you guys know the tricks of the trade of how we can get things in.
The sidewalk money that was proposed in the last bond did not pass.
So I would suggest there's always a way in the future to make this happen, and to say that we shouldn't do this because we don't know how to do the complete solution now, I think is, limits us for the future. I think if we can get what looks to me to be about two-thirds of the sidewalk built as part of this project, that makes it easier later to be able to finish it out, and I can't envision a timeframe where we would not do that, given what I have seen in all of our local schools, the junior high, which is not too far from here, but also the elementary school in Klein, and the amount of walkers, parents, bicycle riders that I see who attend those schools, giving them a sidewalk, I think, is the safest, best thing to do to protect our students.
Excellent.
One of the options to consider too, sir, and I don't know if you even thought about this, but if it's a funding issue where that sidewalk comes down now from Avalon, I have seen it where school districts before, because we're responsible for safe routes to school for kids, we've got to make sure the routes are safe. If they're not safe, we got to provide bus transportation, but the bus transportation aren't typically outside of two miles. But you could, if you didn't, if there wasn't the funding there to extend that sidewalk all the way down Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, you could bring it to the back corner of that school, and we could provide a pedestrian access gate. I've seen it done at other schools before, where that sidewalk would basically loop up into that backside of the property, there would be a pedestrian access gate there, so in the morning, a staff member has that open, and kids could come in that way too, so that way they're not even down on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard at that main intersection and stuff, trying to walk up from there. And I've seen it done before in Clear Creek at a school there, where they have, allow kids to access through the back gate, and they just basically got a cut from the neighborhood off into the backside of the school with the pedestrian gate there.
The problem is the neighborhood we're talking about, where they would walk from, is blocked off by West Ranch of the Pleasant Hill side. So the, the people that you're talking about would cut through, have a sidewalk on Pleasant Hill into the school.
Avalon people.
But they're cut off by West Ranch.
Well.
So unless they go through all those houses to get.
Right, but he's saying, just, once he gets, once they, once they get here, they could come in the back door, kind of, that's what he was saying versus.
So they're crossing the street here?
No, 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 he's saying, well, okay, but once.
Katie, can you pull up my screen?
Assuming the sidewalk is built for, for West Ranch.
But if it gets built, then it's no problem, they walk up to here and go in.
Right, he was saying versus running along the school property, having a sidewalk next to the school property in Friendswood Parkway, then, all I think, all he was suggesting is you, there is a way to put a gate in the back versus building the sidewalk. That's, I think that was his only point.
If there's kids that cross there to get into the school, and then walk down to West Ranch.
Yeah, so if that, if there was a sidewalk running down right there, there could be a pedestrian access gate right there, if we didn't want to, if there was not funding to run a sidewalk all the way down here, they have a pedestrian access gate in the back, so that sidewalk comes down here, and then they can come in through the back of the school.
Yeah, the problem is there's no sidewalk from 1534 to 1518.
Right, but.
That's the problem.
Today, but I, I, I feel very strongly that if we were to put one in for the length of this property, which is two-thirds of the challenge right now, that we, the city, which is two-thirds of the challenge right now, that we, the city, would find a way to get a, a sidewalk in there from fifteen eighteen to fifteen thirty-four.
Or work with West, West Ranch management district.
Or work with West Ranch, because I can't envision that the, the communities of both West Ranch or Avalon would not advocate for that.
Yeah. And I hadn't thought about bicycle riders, but they would wanna not, you don't want them on the freeway.
Absolutely not.
And so-
Or, or doing the same thing, double crossing.
Yeah.
'Cause that's what, what it would be.
Again, we're, we're, we're out up here debating what's best, but it, it's not our, our money per se, other than, you know, residents of Friendswood. Do you have an opinion, sir, on the willingness of your project to put in a sidewalk along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard?
Yeah, I, I think we can definitely explore it. I mean, one thing that we can do as part of the process is post this at the-
You have to come up to the, yeah.
Oh, good point. I, I was liking what you said, so I was just, didn't want-
Sorry, no, I'm, and I'm so loud.
Thank you. Could you stick, could you give us-
Sure, I'm Melissa Turnbaugh, I'm a partner at PPK Architects, so we're privileged to work on this project. But, I mean, one of the things we can do is, I think, the, the sidewalk along west is a no-brainer. It makes a lot of sense, I think it's a wise thing. Um, we can explore the sidewalk on Friendswood Lakes, and maybe what we can do to be good stewards of the district's money and resources is bid it as an alternate, put it in our drawings, bid it as an alternate, see how much of a financial impact it really would be. Um, and then, you know, if, if we are in a budget constraint, which we hope we are not, then we can talk about if we can explore it or not. I mean, that would, I think, be pretty fair, in that if we are in a favorable kind of economic stance, then we can absolutely take it and build it as a part of this, this project. Does that seem appropriate?
Yeah, I just have seen very few projects that have extra money at the end, but, but maybe you've had better experience than me.
Well, we're, we're hoping to, we're hoping to be good stewards, obviously, that market right now will, will see, right? We're trying to build that kind of redundancy in lots of places.
I think, I think that's a reasonable step, though.
That may be all we can get.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, at least two of us feel strongly that it would be good to have this, this partial sidewalk. Um, and the others, maybe three, um, four, okay, so you've, you've switched a little bit, okay?
I didn't, I didn't realize there was a sidewalk coming from Avalon.
Yes.
The, the problem is if there's nothing on that side of the road because they were only building on one side, then to build that little stretch was useless, but if there's one right on the other side there, I need to drive down there and check it out again.
I'm, I'm pretty confident, after going out there, that there, it does one at sort of Avalon, and Becky's saying yes.
So there would just be a short gap, like was described, from fifteen thirty-four to fifteen eighteen? That would then be the thing that would close the whole gap?
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, then moving, then if we, we're ready to move on from sidewalks, then Commissioner Kerner, did you-
Who's the second?
Commissioner Kerner, sorry, who was? Why, I asked her.
Commissioner Sassen already, he brought up the sidewalk issue, which clearly I'm very passionate about it. We, and we share a lot of the, the same values in, and so, you know, I, I love the idea of, of what this is gonna do for our community, but I really feel strongly we need to have sidewalks in and around elementary schools at, for a variety of reasons. Most importantly is the safety of our students, and so that would, that would be my only comment to, to this one.
Commissioner Mann.
On the topic of sidewalks, I now agree, I think that'd be great, and I'm really happy there's one in the front of the school along West Ranch.
Commissioner Hinkley.
Of course, echo sidewalks. Um, but, um, one thing for me is the, uh, you know, looking at the, the driveways, uh, what is the flow path for, like, drop-off, student drop-offs?
So if you can go to that site, not the site, point, that, yeah, that one. So on Pleasant Hill Drive, that's where all the bus traffic will come in.
Okay.
On that side, and then all the car riders will come in off of west right there. And right now, we have availability to stack seventy-seven vehicles.
At one time.
At one time, and currently, I think we can only stack-
Gen- generously twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
On the current Klein campus.
So we tried to maximize that space as much as possible to pull any traffic off of, uh, West Boulevard, because you know the issues on twenty-three fifty-one, five twenty-eight, the other schools trying, you know, the stacking issues that, it's clogging up the main arteries, the main thoroughfares, so we tried to be as generous as possible with the parking and the, uh, roadways to allow for the stacking on the property versus on West Boulevard.
Do we know how many, I think it's a great idea, do we know how many students are at Klein?
We got approximately eight hundred students.
Okay, so it's, it's close, and then, uh, how many at Windsong, and this is just a litmus for myself?
Around, probably around six fifty-six.
Okay, 'cause right now Windsong, you're, you're all, you're down the road a mile with, with, with traffic there.
Yeah, one of the things, if you look at the site plan, so when you, when parents turn in off of west, they're gonna take a hard right, and obviously, it's the most, kind of the longest path around, double stacked. So the only time that it changes and they start to kind of zipper into single stacked is right in front of the school, so you don't have kids walking in front of cars. But, so the double stacked is what allows us to get to that, that seventy-seven mark. Um, so it's, it's, it's beneficial and it's getting a lot of kids. Also, the district, um, which I know that they're starting to implement now, has also kind of committed to using a, like, an RFID tag system, which helps expedite, so once the parents cross the kind of threshold of the campus, they're in a queue, and so that, it, it can help tee up the kids to get, get into that parent lane, so they're not having to find someone in the rain, call out, bullhorn, you know, so it's using technology to help-
For pickup, yeah, okay.
Cause that's, that's when it's the problem typically, is pickup in the afternoon, parents start queuing really early, and so this will help kind of expedite that, so that, that helps a lot.
Okay, I, I like how, I like how that's set up. I mean, my, my children go to Westwood, so I definitely know the twenty-three fifty-one issue. Um, now, what is the, uh, max capacity for the, for this school? Do, and do we ever expect to get near that?
Nine hundred students.
Do we ever expect to get close to that, or?
Um, I would say growth over time, most likely we would get to that. Um, you know, mo, our schools now are gonna end up being K-five schools, you know, Windsong will be K-five, Westwood and Bell's, of course, that's attached together is K-five, and this will be K-five as well. Um, yeah, I, I think, I mean, if, you know, the growth continues in Friendswood like it is, with Friendswood Trails, Avalon, possibly Georgetown subdivision later on, that we could see those numbers increase.
Does this facility have expansion capabilities?
Um, I wouldn't say that we have expansion capabilities within the facility. I mean, we can always add portables, um, not, nothing anybody wants out there, but also, the district can also look at rezoning at certain times to, to include more of a population to other parts of the campus. But that's a board decision, that's a whole other issue there, but-
Okay.
That's something that they would typically look at, is if we need to rezone neighborhoods to a different campus in order to bring down those numbers there, so we don't have to put out the ugly portables on the site.
No problem. Um, we just one, one other question is, um, so the, uh, crossing guards, uh, has, has there been any considerations on safety for them, like lighted paths, uh, on the road? You know, lights that flash when, uh, when they're crossing the road or anything like that?
We, we haven't talked, talked about that, um, at this point. Typically, we obviously have the school zones where during certain hours it's slowing down and things like that, but I, I haven't seen as many unless it's really major thoroughfares that, that you actually warrant that. Uh, sometimes, you know, we'll put in traffic lights or actually the flashing lights where, you know, you slow down to thirty miles or twenty miles an hour, something like that. But typically, the in-road become, can become more expensive and kind of the maintenance.
I think especially the Pearland Parkway's where I'd have a concern with stuff like that, that's why I ask.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a good, we can explore.
Okay.
Explore that.
That's good for me, thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
Hi, uh, just, uh, a little more exploration on the traffic flow. So if I'm coming in west, I'm gonna come in and then go to the top of this, and then back down the middle? And then-
The, the middle that kind of jogs, um, to the, yeah, so if you come in and then head north-
All the way to-
All the way up, and then down south, you kind of see the jog that actually is also our fire lane.
And that's the door right there?
And actually, the front door is even further. So right, right there is our drop-off area, so we have purposefully kind of maximized as many parents on site.
And then the exit route?
And they, yeah, straight out, and then back out.
Okay. Now, I, I, I noticed in the traffic plan that the recommendation was for two lanes exiting, so a left turn and a right turn. Is that provided? I really couldn't tell.
Correct, yeah, a, a, a left and, a left and a right, so that if you're backing up to turn, to turn left out of west, but then everyone else can turn right, so yes.
I see.
And typically, like during school hours for drop-off, um, we would typically say right turn only out of there, um, in order to move traffic quicker, because trying to have people turn left while there's other people coming down west and turns that, most of our schools are like that. If you go to Westwood right now, it's right turn only out of there, because it's gonna take you forever and a day to get out on twenty-three fifty-one and turn left, so. That's typical of what you see anywhere, just to keep the traffic flow moving.
Even the high school does that today. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The only question that we haven't talked about is what, um, Commissioner Sassen alluded to at the beginning of his remarks. Uh, I'm curious, there's a number of trees that you're putting in landscaping, but there's nothing along the back of the property to screen the houses in between you, uh, your development and the housing back there. Is there a reason you didn't put any landscape, any trees back there?
Actually, there's a lush landscape plan.
So, we, as of right now, um, again, we wanna be, try to be good stewards, and so we don't wanna get your hopes up. We actually have a beautiful landscape plan for this whole back that includes a lot of trees, probably a hundred additional trees to what you're seeing, but we, again, we don't know that we can afford to do so, so before we get your hopes up about we're adding a hundred trees, we want to do a landscape buffer against the neighborhood. We feel like that's good for the kids, it's good stewards to be, you know, good neighbors. Um, we hope to have like a little outdoor classroom that is, you know, under the trees in that area. Again, budget providing, so we are showing you what we absolutely, no matter what, where we come in budget-wise, are, are committed to doing. And then the other things we hope are additional amenities that we can, can show and share, um, if, if budget allows. But we're hoping to have a full landscape buffer along that whole kind of, um, neighborhood property line.
There's a thirty-foot storm sewer easement along this edge of the property, so no trees will be allowed in that easement.
Correct.
Right.
Beyond, yeah, beyond that, yeah.
So the nearest trees could be to that six-foot fence would be thirty feet away?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't catch that, okay.
So-
And we have an exception, the reason why we didn't require the landscape buffer is because there's an exception. If there's a thirty-foot separation with some kind of easement or something like that, then we don't require the buffer.
Okay, that was my, you, I was going right to you next, going, okay, what, what are the rules?
Yeah.
Okay, so there-
Yeah, we're hoping we do it. I mean, it's good for the kids, for their places to play outside, it's good for shade, it's good for water, I, I mean, it's just, and being good neighbors, but we just don't wanna promise something if we can't, if budget doesn't allow.
So it sounds like you have two plans, you have the, the current plan, and then you have the I-wish list.
Right.
Which now includes a sidewalk along West Ranch, uh, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard.
Correct.
And the west, the one along West Boulevard.
We'll put that in the base plan.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
We could also keep in mind with our tree mitigation, um, if we have a site that has a lot of trees that they need to replace, um, they could donate trees.
That's a great idea.
So.
Because there is one tree they have to mitigate on this property at the, at the road, but Pleasant Hill, but wasn't gonna quibble about that. You're adding a lot of nice trees.
Adding a lot of nice trees.
I mean, but even as we're going through like the high school plan right now, as we're removing trees from there, depending upon the tree ordinance and how it changes, could allow us trees that we were gonna put there to put them on the Klein property, because maybe we don't have the space over at the high school to do it, so we could move those trees to this location, so.
That's a good idea.
Super.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else from anybody? Here's kind of what I've heard, um, tha, thank y'all very much, y'all, uh, thank you for coming up and talking to us. What I've heard is that, uh, we had a motion to approve, but I think, based on what I've heard at least, it might be a mo, need to be amended to be a motion to approve with the addition of sidewalk adjacent to the school along West Boulevard, and then-
An option.
And then-
Strong, strong consideration.
Then, yeah, seriously explore adding a sidewalk along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, which is, we're still calling it at this time. And we did some, something similar to that at the high school recently as well, of adding those, continue, make it, you know, in writing that we really want that to be looked at hard. Is that, did I capture?
Yep, I, I shall move.
You gotta make the motion.
I, I-
Here.
Motion to, uh, motion to approve with, uh-
But to amend your motion.
Yeah.
To amend the motion.
Yeah, I, I amend my motion to, motion to approve with, uh, the, uh, adding sidewalks along West Boulevard, uh, strong consideration of sidewalk along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, and strong consideration of, uh, landscape buffers up against the, uh, near, between the school and the sub, and, and the house subdivision, uh, at the back of the property.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Industry Park, Friendswood Phase Two, a subdivision of fifteen point oh-one-two-six acres being out of three tracts of land, four point nine oh-seven-one acres of land being out of Reserve A of the BSR subdivision number one, together with nine point nine-nine-three-six acres of land recorded under Harris County Clerk File Number two oh-one-five-zero-zero-eight-four-seven-oh-eight, and point one-one-one-nine acres of land recorded under Harris County Clerk's File Number RP dash twenty-nineteen dash one-eight-two-seven-oh-one, being out of Lot sixty-three, Divisions B and C of Hoyledale Kaufman Edition Volume Three, Page Six, Harris County Map Records in the Perry and Austin League, Abstract Fifty-Five, City of Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. I think y'all do that to me on purpose, by the way. Uh, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to disapprove, subject to, uh, cha, uh, the corrections listed, the twenty-six corrections listed on the memo from the, uh, that was provided by staff.
Dated?
Dated September eighth.
Second.
Let's see, so Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Um, so this plat, um, obviously, we're all familiar with this project, it's for Industry Part Two. Um, so their proposal is to create two commercial reserves, um, that will have multiple buildings on them. Um, there, they just have a lot of outstanding comments that we haven't worked through at this time. Um, the comments have been provided to the applicant, unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. Um, it's just, it's just not ready for, I mean, like, we cannot approve it, um, with the comments that are outstanding.
But it's reaching the timing such that we, we have to address it?
Yes, the state law requires us, if the applicant doesn't withdraw the application, then we have to put it on an agenda and take some kind of action, approve, uh, dis, approve conditionally or disapprove.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen, I mean, we have no one to ask questions of it.
No, there's no one to ask questions, I was kind of hoping the, the, the comparison between the two things on our agenda today are night and day. We had a, a well-prepared presentation from the, the school district, and we quibbled about some items that might be improving for it. Uh, this is basically something that was put out that wasn't bothered to be checked. They, they're relying on the city of Friendswood to be the checkers for this. I'm very disappointed in how they're doing their work. Uh, I am impressed that you guys are checking it for them. I, I think it's a flaw in the state system, but it is how it is. Uh, I appreciate you finding the twenty-six items of, of change, and, uh, hopefully, we'll get these things done. I had original comment of when will Public Works give their comments, but I see now that they have updated that to include that, so, uh, um, that, that's all I have to say. I'm disappointed in the quality of the work that they're doing. I'm, I'm for the project, I'm for what they're trying to do, I'm, I'm, look forward to having this done. I wonder if they're going to continue this shoddy work all the way through. I hope not. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Mann.
At the inception of this, I was very excited about the program, or the, the, the whole, the whole setup that they had, even the multiple stages, and this is stage one, we've worked tirelessly with them to try to get this done. Staff, fantastic job, um, this is not ready to go, and there's, we can't. There, it, we couldn't even come closer right now with, with these, so there's, there's no way we can move forward. And I don't, I'm starting to wonder if the stuff that we've seen before is even close to what their long-range plan is gonna be, because nothing is being done, and, and I was excited at first, and now I'm starting to be skeptical.
Commissioner Clark, anything additional?
Uh, no, uh, not ready for prime time, I don't see how we could approve it, uh, or conditionally approve it.
Commissioner Hinkley?
I'll just echo that I'm disappointed, because I, uh, do like the project, would like to see it move forward, but, uh, but as these things drag on, uh, you do kind of, uh, lose confidence in if this will ever come together the way it should, so. I tried reading through the notes, but, um, there are just so many of them, so, that's it.
Commissioner Kerner?
No further comments.
I feel the same way, it's all been said here, so rather than say it again, but we have put a lot of, all of us, uh, the commission and staff have put a lot of time, uh, on this. But we have a motion to disapprove, uh, with comments. And we have a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, next, we have a discussion item regarding the proposed amendments to Appendix B subdivisions. Becky?
Yes, sir, so we briefly mentioned this at the last meeting, that the, the ordinance Subcommittee had been working on a rewrite to the subdivision ordinance. Um, so this is our official full submittal to the full commission, um, between the, the Subcommittee- Yes, sir, so we briefly mentioned this at the last meeting, that the, the ordinance Subcommittee had been working on a rewrite to the subdivision ordinance, um, so this is our official full submittal to the full commission, um, between the Subcommittee and staff and legal counsel, we think we've gotten everything pretty much ironed out, so, the, the objective is to update the ordinance for a couple of different reasons. Uh, in twenty nineteen, the state made some changes regarding plating, which y'all just discussed, you can approve, approve with conditions or disapprove, uh, we need to incorporate all that legal requirements into our ordinance, um, so that's that, and then we reorganize the sections in the subdivision ordinance to where it lays out a little bit better, it kind of pulls you through the process, it starts at the beginning and ends at the end, where right now it's kind of pick and choose. Um, we did put in a master plan, currently, our ordinance has a, it's called a conceptual plan, and it very specifically says that the commission cannot approve a conceptual plan, so it kind of serves no purpose, so what this is gonna do is have subdivisions like Georgetown Avalon West Ranch, they turn in one giant master plan, so you can see the big picture, and then that way, when you get their plats for Section One, Section Two, you can start seeing how the puzzle pieces fit in, and then if there's any big, you know, major changes along the way, then they need to bring their master plan back to the commission, so you can see, you know, what's going on and, and discuss that. Um, we, we filled in some gaps of information, uh, there were some missing items in our ordinance, such as having the authority to consider things, um, and variances for, for subdivision requirements, we added in some extra information for developers, that way they don't have to flip back and forth between the subdivision ordinance, the zoning ordinance, the design criteria manual, so we kind of put the, the big-ticket items in there, um, landscape buffers along our major thoroughfares was kind of a big one for the Community Overlay District, a lot of times, they don't realize that's something they need to include when they start laying out their subdivisions. Uh, we put in our hot topic of tree mitigation, um, so we make sure to catch all of those before they start getting clear-cut, we put in some fire code requirements, Fire Marshal was very happy, and then we removed the option to pay into the sidewalk fund, right now, if a developer cannot, or doesn't think that it's feasible to put in a sidewalk, then they can petition to pay into a fund, and then at a later date, the city, the city can take that money, and they can put the sidewalk in, um, which we, we'll let the Subcommittee talk about that one a little bit, um, because there was some discussion. These are the House Bill changes, um, luckily for us, everything that the state is telling us we have to do, we already do that, just in practice, um, so this is gonna put that in writing in our ordinance, and then if y'all have any questions over any of the House Bill changes. Um, this is just a comparison of our table of contents, right now, we've got eleven items, our new one has got sixteen, uh, the, the, where are we at, number three, general requirements and design criteria, has been broken into individual section, so it's just easier to navigate, we've got an easement section, we have a lot dot, lot design section, we've got one for streets, so it just kind of lumps everything together, I think it's easier to navigate. Um, this is where, it's talking about clarifying the process, it kind of pulls you through the, pulls you through the process, so you start with your master plan, um, you get into very specific sections, and then it also includes the comprehensive information. Let me know if I'm jumping over anything, uh, most of this is clerical items, it's not really anything, um, that I think there's a lot of debate on, up until we get to sidewalk fund, um, so, as I mentioned, we were talking about removing the option to pay into the sidewalk fund, these properties have already paid into the sidewalk fund, and this money is in the city's accounts, sitting, waiting to be used, so, um, the Subcommittee, along with the help of the Chairman and Vice Chairman, who did some walking around for us, checking out sites, and staff, kind of went through these and talked about the feasibility of, of how we're gonna make this work, so this money, it's there, and we're gonna explore options to figure out how to get these sidewalks put in. The problem is, we, there's a couple complications, so when the city physically goes to put in these sidewalks, a lot of these are not in the city's jurisdiction, it's text dot jurisdiction, and then one of them, uh, Paintball Zone, was out on Beamer Road, Beamer Road is not even in the city limits, so that's a little bit of a hiccup there, um, and then you get into project management, if we're already, if the city is already on a project, and, oh hey, we can do sidewalks, great, but to go in purely to put in a sidewalk, you have to have somebody manage all that, set it all up, find people, get materials, so the, the monies that we are collecting doesn't cover the planning portion, the surveying portions, inflation, it's, when we actually have gone out and looked at it, now we realize how big of an issue this might be. So the monies that we have there, staff is gonna talk about trying to get some cost sharing, maybe with text dots, since that's where the majority of the projects are, um, so our recommendation is to remove the option to pay into the sidewalk fund, um, the commission would still have the latitude, if just one hundred percent, you do not think it is possible, these people cannot get a sidewalk in, the commission still has that authority, but it's not gonna be the, the go-to, um, and I don't, Tom wants to talk about kind of our thought process on some of this.
Yeah, so in discussion, of course, um, most of us, or if not all of us, are, are pretty passionate about sidewalks in the city, so we, we got talking about it, and, uh, of course, the subject of the fund came up, and of course, uh, there's a survey done of the, the sidewalk fund, what, what sidewalks are not in place, that there's a fund there, um, you know, you start looking at that, and what's the realistic va, what's the realistic cost of putting in those sidewalks, you really start looking at that, when you collect those funds, it's, it's more based off of how much is a sidewalk per square foot to put in, and it does not take into account all the, um, all the other factors, the project management, the surveying, the, uh, you know, what, this is for a ten-year period, so if you collect that money now, and you put in the sidewalk eight years from now, it's not gonna be the same cost. So there, there's several different factors there that make this, the sidewalk fund very hard to actually capitalize upon, um, plus that, that fund has to be used on that particular property too, which, which really locks it down. So really, and, and I, I think the best option is to remove the, the fund as an option, and put it on the, the builder to, to do everything they can to put the sidewalk in place, of course, we have the option as a, uh, as a group to, uh, to come, if we, if we agree there's not, uh, it's not feasible, or not possible, we can, uh, we have that as an option, right? But I, I think removing the sidewalk fund is really our, really a good option for us at this point, to, um, encourage developers to, to put sidewalks in.
Yes, sir, and a, a good example is over by Vergana Commons, where the famous Chick-fil-A is, um, they had a, kind of a hard time putting sidewalks over there, because there's open ditch, um, and they have to do their landscape buffers and things like that, so they ended up putting the sidewalk on the inside of the ditch, and gave a public sidewalk easement, and then all those businesses right there, they're all, they're all different, the two buildings, the Chick-fil-A, the Chipotle, those are all different business owners, and they managed, all of them managed to get it all worked out and tied in together, um, I mean, it took a little bit of extra work, and, you know, an easement, but it was doable. And that was, I think, probably one of the first ones that the commission really kind of put their foot down and said, no, we want the sidewalk, and they figured out a way to make it work, um, going down, what's the opposite road, Leisure, there's a pipeline over there, is why there's no sidewalk on that side, because I know we discussed that as well, but that one is, the pipeline company just said absolutely not, you're, you will not put a sidewalk on top of our pipeline, so that would be an example where the commission can still say, oh.
Any, any discussion, any other comments on this?
Yeah, so basically, um, I mean, any questions, if anybody has any proposed changes, the next step is to take this for, uh, ordinance change, so public hearings with us, public hearing with city council, and hopefully get that voted through.
So that would be on our next agenda?
It would be on, what date?
Well, advertise it the week of September twentieth, um, for public hearing for our first meeting in October.
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be the second meeting from now, and then it would get to city council in November, assuming we passed, or even if we didn't pass, I guess, it would go to city council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we, we would see it October, and then they would get it November, December, so hopefully before the end of the year, uh, would be nice to get that, get that in there.
Okay, I, I've got, just because that's what I do, I read these things, and I, no, no, I'm not gonna go through them, I have probably a dozen.
We've been staring at it for.
No, no, I know, but I have, I have a dozen little things that just kind of, well, but you don't, you say submit something, but you don't say how, is it written, is it electronic, you might wanna, I'm gonna hand, I'm gonna give these to you.
Okay.
And, and you guys look through them, and what makes sense you use, but I'm, it's not, none of them are, rise to the occasion of, let's, let's discuss this, um, I, I got, okay, there's one, that, this, I'm just gonna say it out there, no, okay, I can't, I can't help myself. Because somebody may have a difference of opinion. Go ahead, put it out.
It's like.
No, somebody may have a different opinion.
It's like saying you have a secret, and then you're not gonna tell us.
Yeah, yeah, but no, I'm gonna, you're gonna see them all and have a good laugh at some of these, but, uh, on sidewalks, there are some exceptions to sidewalks, uh, you know, where there's an open ditch, subdivision accepted prior to the sidewalks being required, I thought there was one glaring that, in my mind, I was, I wondered, and so this is, I'm gonna, it's on my list that I'll give to you, but, you know, if the commission or city council has previously, uh, agreed not to put in a sidewalk, you need an exception for that, if, if somebody has ruled, you have all these other exceptions, open ditches, it was accepted, but what, what if the commission previously, three years ago, said, no, you don't have to put it in, there ought to be an exception that's allowed for previous decisions.
Previously approved exceptions.
That's all, that's, and I'm just, you know, anyway, that's, things like that are what this, that list is about, but I'll hand it to you, and you guys.
Okay, yeah, we'll check it out, I, I'm, I'm hoping.
Think about it.
I thought that was covered, but maybe we didn't explicitly.
Maybe, honestly, maybe I misread it.
The exception should be for residential properties, but we'll double-check and make sure that that covers the commercial properties.
I just thought maybe there was an oppor, some, at some point, somebody got an exception.
Right.
That's all, okay, done.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it with Mary Kay.
That's why we're not gonna go through all those, but yeah, something you, so you can look at, go from there, okay, anything from anybody else? Okay, uh, next, we have a discussion, nope, sorry, that's what we did, our next agenda topic is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Yes, sir, um, so at this time, it's, our next regular ma, meeting would be Thursday, September twenty-third, um, we do not have any agenda items for that meeting, so, um, looks like we might have a little break, um, the submittal date has already passed, um, and we don't have any plats or site plans, and, so, anything, we did get one extension, but it can wait till the next meeting, so we're not gonna have a meeting just to approve an extension, um, the meeting after that would be Thursday, October fourteenth, which seems like a really, like, it's halfway through the month, but it's the second Thursday, uh, and then also wanted to remind everybody, I sent out an email this afternoon about the work session on Monday, um, we did post an agenda for a possible quorum on Monday, so you're all welcome to attend city council's meeting Monday night, um, as I explained in my email, we have fourteen items on council's agenda, and it's all of your hard work, um, so if anybody ever wanted to come to a council meeting for P and Z, this would be the one.
If.
If, yeah, and then, uh, that's all I have.
So just for clarity, there is no meeting on the twenty-third, there is a meeting on the four, well, there should be a meeting on the fourteenth.
Yes, yes, there will be.
And city council's meeting, what time does it start on Monday?
Six o'clock.
Perfect, okay, thank you, uh, communications are next, I will start with commissioner updates, uh, do any commissioners have anything they wish to communicate, including suggestions for future agenda items, Subcommittee updates, general comments, or any updates from lay's on assignments, and I will start with Commissioner Kerner.
I have nothing today.
Commissioner Sasson?
Were you gonna bring up the item on the DRC report at this point?
Uh, I was, yes.
Okay, now I have nothing.
Commissioner Clark? Mr. Hinckley?
Nothing.
Commissioner Mann?
No, sir.
Okay, I, I have two things I was gonna bring up at, at this point, um, one was, uh, I'm just throwing it out there, I saw, I, I went through the DRC report, and something kind of caught my eye, and it was the one on three oh seven and three oh seven and a half Laurel, where the house that burned down, kind of by the old, um, uh, Friendswood ISD Administrative Office, and that, we're saying that it's in, since it's in the downtown, it was a home that they were using as an office, and there was an existing home there, but it's, since it's in the downtown district, the house that burned down can't be rebuilt at, unless it has office in the mixed-use, office and commercial on the bottom, and a residence on top. I'm gonna wanna talk, I mean, at some point, I'm, I wanna understand that better, because it just, it's concerning to me that somebody had a home, no matter how they were using that home, in my opinion, it wasn't built as a home, it was a residence at some point, that they were then just using it as a temporary office, I guess, and there is a residence there, right next door on it now, that they can't rebuild that home, so I, I'm, I wonder in the rest of downtown, in the rest of the downtown district, I, I should've looked, and I didn't, and you guys will, staff will know, but I, I assume that there are homes in the downtown district, that if, for some reason, they caught on fire, uh, needed fifty-one percent, or, you know, or greater than fifty percent repairs, they couldn't rebuild their own home. That's it, these are the only ones?
There are a few homes still scattered throughout the downtown district, um, but they are non-conforming uses.
Right.
So if they are destroyed more than fifty percent.
Okay.
They're not allowed back.
I hear that, and it just, I understand the rules and, and why we have them, but that just seems like, we do, we go, we jump through lots of hoops to let people extend walkways, because they've been flooded, and they, you know, they, they were accepted prior to the rules, but.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm concerned that somebody can't rebuild a house that was already there, and used it the way they had been using it, maybe not, maybe this example at se, uh, three oh seven, three oh seven and a half, isn't the good one, but I, it makes me worry about the rest of the homes, that we wouldn't let somebody rebuild their house and live there.
It's a, I mean, it's a perfect example of, uh, but if you allow those non-conforming uses to replace, another house is gonna be there for another forty years, and it's not going to contribute to our visions of the downtown district, and, you know, our achievement, you know, what we want the downtown to be.
I absolutely understand, I just think there's a lot of people that would be concerned about telling someone they couldn't rebuild their house, that.
It was not an easy conversation.
Right.
Right, and they actually took it a lot, so they.
Were they notified? I'm sorry, sorry, I interrupted you, I apologize.
That's, that particular one, those property owners were there when the downtown district was created, when that zoning was changed, so they were notified, whether or not, you know, they understood, I, I don't know, but, um, they were there.
Well, their property was original, it was zoned original business district before it was changed to downtown, so it was commercial even before.
Yes.
The downtown district, because the original bus, business district was a similar outline to the current downtown district, and that zoning classification name was just changed to downtown, and the requirements were added and enhanced.
Okay, so it's been a non-conforming for a long time.
Yes, sir.
Because there are people still living next door, I know, I know that.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and luckily, they actually were, seemed very open to the idea of having a mixed-use, like the DC Stanley Photography, I, I was extremely terrified to send them that notice, that they couldn't rebuild their house there, and there, the, we had a meeting with them, and they seemed okay with it.
Okay, okay, good, well, it caught my attention, because I, I was worried about others, that if their house burned down, they couldn't rebuild their house, I think, hey, is that the result we really want, but, okay, um, if, if people had proper notification, they knew, um, let me, let me think about that, but I, I saw that in the DRC report, and just wanted to talk about it, the, the other thing I wanted to, to mention tonight, appropriate or not, but, you know, as every time I drive down five eighteen, and maybe many of us do the same thing, we look over at the, the old Quaker Parsonage lot, and just kind of, oh, I shake my head every time, uh, and realize how disappointing that was, that that was the result for that property, uh, it, it really just bothers me every time I drive by, but with that said, um, I wanna make sure that, you know, anybody that happens to watch this, or everybody here knows my feelings, is that I think, I personally believe that everybody on this commission, staff at the city and city council, I think, did everything possible to save at least some of those trees, some of the key trees, I really believe that, so, um, it didn't happen, they, they got torn down, uh, but I'm really disappointed that, that that was the result, but I think everybody worked really hard, that I know of, worked really hard to try to find another outcome that was agreeable to everybody, just, just couldn't get there, but. But the reason I kind of started that, other than just driving by it almost every day and looking over there is, somebody tried to give me something today and I couldn't accept it, but I paid for it. And this is a bowl, very, you know, nice wooden bowl that came from one of those trees that was torn down. And so at least something nice has come from, you know, somebody took the time and effort to make something nice out of that. I just wanted to pass that along that, you know, every time I drive by there, but I'll have that in my house at least to, to look at. Wish we could have done something different than that, but, but anyway. Just pass that along in communication.
Do you mind me stepping back one second on the DRC question? So when, when somebody else buys that property, does that get disclosed in the, the transaction? That they cannot rebuild that?
Um, I, I mean, no.
I'm just curious.
The city's not involved in property transactions, so it's up to a purchaser to do their research.
So somebody potentially could end up with that and not, no?
Yeah.
After their house burned down.
The deed though, right?
The deed doesn't have anything to do with zoning or anything. I mean, we offer development, development meetings free of charge, no, you know, non-committal. We encourage anybody who's looking at a property to come in and talk to us before they purchase.
On the website? Can somebody come to our site and see if there's zoning?
Yeah, our zoning is available online and, but a lot of people don't, a lot of people don't understand, you know, the implic, implementations of non-conforming uses.
I think people up here would, but common, okay, yeah. That's my concern, is that something like that would happen completely unexpected. Moving on, I believe we have Council A's on update. Councilmember Hanks.
I have nothing.
Who says she has nothing else to talk about this evening. So we look forward to hearing all the great topics on.
Monday night?
Yeah, on Monday night.
Before us, we will.
Oh, that's right, I skipped, did I, no, I went there, but yes, sir.
I think subcommittee and the ordinance subcommittee.
Well, no, I asked, I asked for that when everybody went through, but did I not?
No, that's fine. I'm not man, I'm just a man.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Okay. With that, next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Um, so the sidewalk curbs and ramps program with Tech Dot is moving right along and when the bridge got shut down the other day, I was like, whoa, this is extreme to replace mast arm lights. But that shutdown is actually not related to our Tech Dot project at all. Other, well, it is a Tech Dot project, but there is some damage to the bridge over the creek right here on five eighteen. So they are, they have rerouted the traffic down to the two lanes, I'm sure you've all been through it, but unfortunately, that's probably going to be nine months to a year project. So we're going to have to get used to that for a little bit. But like I said, the other project is going good. FDEDC, the Downtown Economic Development Corporation, is looking at doing a public outreach regarding their downtown lighting plan. So they're going to start putting together some presentations to do, you know, to give to council and different organizations. Planning and zoning commission will be on that list eventually, but just to present their project and what they're planning on doing with our downtown lighting. And that's all I have.
Becky? Mary Kay? Nothing? Okay, with that, our September ninth, twenty twenty-one Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody.